Oh, yeah. Sound good?
A little loud.
I'll back up. How's that? I'll back up.
There you go.
Turn down the game.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Are we ready to go? Seems like we're okay. All right. Good morning and welcome to the November 2024 meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Library Trustees. My name is Michael Dunn. I'm the president of this board. We do have a quorum, and so we can go around for introductions, starting with John.
John Johnston, Vice President.
Judith Gwynn.
Sharon Fitzsimmons.
John Walters.
Thank you, everybody. It's good to see you. One of our absent trustees, Tressa Setlac, did grant me her vote by proxy over email, so that is here as well. First item up is approval of the agenda. We can entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written. If anybody wants to make any amendments.
No, I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Judith.
Second.
Thank you, John. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion passes. Next up is approval of the October 2024 minutes. We can entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written. Anybody willing to move to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Judith.
Second.
Thank you, John. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion passes. All right, moving on to the monthly expense ledger, the EALs. We can entertain a motion to approve the EALs.
I move to approve.
Thank you, Judith. Trailblazer today. Appreciate that. Can somebody second the motion, and then we can have discussion time?
Second.
Thank you, Sharon. All right, Belinda, gird your loins. Here we go.
I got nothing.
I have a couple. Page one, halfway down, Author Visit 4500. Who was the author? What was the topic? And was that multiple presentation?
So that was the author, Nnedi Akorofor. She has won every science fiction and fantasy award that is possible to win. She's an extremely famous and well-regarded author. And so we collaborated with Maryland Libraries Together, Calvert Library and Howard Library to put that program on. So this is the largest named author we've had since Tom Clancy in the eighties. So we were really honored she would agree to to come here. And so she actually agreed to come here to discount as she had another speaking engagement nearby.
Yeah, it was just to give to libraries. Her typical fee would have been fifteen thousand, and we are getting reimbursements from those other entities for this visit. So I would actually say that we had Tom Clancy. He was practically unknown. He had just put out his first book. So this this was a big one for us. It was very, very well attended. It was a single event. It was broadcast via Zoom across the state.
We received three thousand dollars from the state Maryland Coalition of Libraries, something like that. We also received Calvert and Charles are going to be reimbursing us, is that right? Calvert and Howard are also reimbursing some of the costs.
So in effect, that's forty five hundred. It's gross.
Yeah, that's that's the full cost, and then we'll be getting reimbursements for it. I think we're out for five hundred dollars. So there are five hundred or a thousand that the library will end up paying.
And congrats on that program. What a success. It's really awesome.
On page two at the bottom. I think that may have passed. I apologize, but is that a month? Is that a monthly or a quarterly cost?
Monthly.
Thank you.
And as we've noted before, we are experimenting at the Charlotte Hall location with Smurla on another vendor who is lower cost, and we're and we're sort of evaluating that service to see if we'll switch everybody over.
Any other questions?
At the bottom then of page three, very bottom, Smurla Hall Utilities, is that the new trash person?
It could be. That is, that is a grouping. Smurla will bill us for electric, trash, and water. And sometimes the bill will include two of those. Sometimes it'll include all three, and sometimes it just includes one. I would need to go deep into this one to figure out which one that is. But I, that is not just trash if trash is included there.
All right. Thank you very much. I have no further question.
Prosecution rests. Thank you. All right, we're ready to vote then. So all in favor of approving the EALs, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion passes. All right, we do not have a treasurer's report on this month's agenda, so we can talk about Smurla. John, over to you.
All right, we held a pre-bid conference October 24th for a vendor to get the RFP for strategic planning. And they took a, they submitted a couple of questions, some of them directly to Ashley. The evaluation period ends November 21st. So there'll be, so at Smurla's board meeting in December, we'll be presented with the the winning bid for approval, and then anticipating a warning contract December 12th. And on November 2nd, there were three of us plus Ashley who attended the Citizens of Maryland Libraries Annual Conference. This was up in Bowie. The library, there's a very nice facility. It was very informative. The keynote speaker was Lisa Varga, Library Journal's 2024 Library of the Year. And she was going into detail about some of the censorship going on in Virginia. She's been active in combating. Very, yeah. That was very worth the attend, attending based on that alone. And they got to meet the director of the Calvert Library.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay.
That sounds fun. All right. Excellent. Michael, over to you for celebrations.
All right. Well, we've got a couple of hip hip parades to recognize today. The first is for Amy and Belinda, who are both here, so I can give you your certificates right now. Using their own time and finances, they came in and completely renovated, well, completely redid the staff restrooms here in the Lexington Park Library. So painted, refreshed, deep clean. And they really make a world of difference. So thank you so much, both of you, for very much above and beyond. And the next time you do that, let me know so I can come and paint too. So thank you.
I think, please receive your certificates.
Yeah.
Excuse me. We have a protocol.
Speech, speech.
Congratulations.
If you, next time you're in Leonard Town Library, please go back and look in the children's and teen area. So we did a shifting of shelves there. So one of the concerns that we were hearing from parents was that the children's area was kind of wide open and not demarcated. And that's an issue because children can take it in their head to run. And also, they just kind of like feeling a little bit more wearing clothes. So we moved shelving out and around. And also move some of the teen area to create a kind of better space. And so they had to, we did get the county's help moving the shelves. We're very grateful for that. But then we did have to have shifting of books to restock those shelves. And we're just giving kind of a very large hip hip to the Leonard Town Library staff for shifting those books to allow for the shelving move. It really does improve the aesthetics of the area. And we're already getting lots of compliments from the customers who were expressing, you know, hey, we'd like some changes here. So we heard you. Those changes have been made. And thank you to Leonard Town Library staff for all that work getting that pulled together.
Is the signage directing people to the appropriate sections? You know, I mentioned someone going in there and going, can't find the children's section.
Oh, it's pretty, it's pretty evident where it is. And it also kind of really opened up the area inside for a kind of like more room there. And so we're very happy with with the results of that. So next time you're there, go back and take a look if you haven't already.
The shelves are low, so it's not like they're up high blocking the whole thing. They're low shelves. They just.
So you can still like see the boat back there and and it's pretty clear what what it is. So we'll then move on to informational, and the first thing we'll do is take a look at the budget so far this year. There it is. So far this year for personnel with thirty three percent of the year passed, which is of course incredible. It feels like it's just flying by, doesn't it? So on salaries, FICA, and we're basically at thirty percent, so a little bit of room there. On the health insurance, while we haven't spent as much on OPEB, yet a couple of the branches, in fact, except for Leonard Town, everybody is a bit over. So health expenses are a bit more than we thought they were going to be this year, the the insurance costs. We'll keep an eye on that and but we'll have to see where we are at the end of the year. Obviously, those are always a guess, but rates may have gone up here.
Can I ask them those health clinic admin fees? That's that new service that was introduced, right? Did that come out in one fell swoop at a certain date, or when do we pay that?
Well, what's going to happen with that is that we have now confirmed that we're going to be getting a refund. And we don't yet know the full amount, but our guess based on our percentage was going to be about a thirty thousand dollar refund, and that's going to pay for that, and we had budgeted for that to happen. And the rest could help offset these health insurance increase costs, which is basically what the county does with their refund. So when we get that, we'll see.
So I think the question was like, when do we get billed for that? Because they're looking at the number of employees that actually sign up for it, or? And then?
No, it doesn't.
Flat fee?
It's it's a, it's a percentage of our employees. Yeah, it's a percentage of we we are, we are done a percentage based on the overall employees of the county. So whatever our percentage of employees participating in the health is what we're paying.
So when do we?
I don't know. They have not informed us of that. But my guess is they know that we're using the refund. They're using the refund. So my guess is that it will be around that time of the refund or towards the end of the fiscal year. I'm not going to ask until we receive the refund, and then I'll reach out to my counterpart at the county and ask about when and if and how we pay for that.
We started July 1st. Is that right?
They're open now?
What's keeping the clinic afloat until the money comes in?
Well, the county paid. The county paid. We, but we now have to pay the county.
It will pay, we'll pay back our share.
Investment.
Yes. Now, we we will have to take a look at, without violating HIPAA, are people actually using this clinic? Because we don't have to stay in. And if we find that people are simply not going to be using it, then that might be something that we do reevaluate.
I used it.
It was great. Got right in.
Good to know. Yeah, it's just helpful for us to know kind of how this whole new service is launching and what it looks like. You know, it's hopefully it'll be great.
Still learning.
Yeah, it is. It is something that we're, as Belinda says, we are still working on. So we need to look at those costs, but I I think that that refund will certainly take care of them for the year and also pay for the health clinic share. Over on page two, you see that we are for Lexington Park and for Leonard Town, a bit over the percentage for the year for electric costs. And it has been a very warm fall, so that could be something that's accounting for it. We'll just need to look through the year and see where we are with those. They're not so out of line that I'm particularly concerned about that for now.
Asset strategy is here. It's nine forty five.
Okay, in that case, let's move over to asset strategy, and I'll pick this up later.
Well, good morning, everybody.
Good morning. How are you?
Doing very well for Friday and looking forward to the weekend like all of us.
Absolutely.
And John could not make it this morning with a conflict with another client, but we will cover as much as we can. And Mike, I'll try to keep this to fifteen minutes for our dialogue before the meeting.
Yes, that'll be great. Thank you.
And two main topics. We certainly want to cover what happened in three Q, very strong quarter for the markets. And then from our meeting back in September, we were tasked with looking at some other options in the large cap value space to see if there might be an upgrade for Coho. So certainly that could be an action item and try to get through the quarterly report quickly so we can devote time to that particular analysis.
And be possible?
What was the question?
Do you share your screen so that you can show us which page of the report you are talking about as we move forward?
You know, I cannot, did not get that set up that way. Michael, are you able to pull it up?
We'll just make it work on our end.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can just be sure to tell us the page, that's all.
Page numbers. All right. So we'll start on page four. Recap of what happened for the quarter, year to date. And two big themes, first, starting with the equity world. We had a migration from the market being dominated by large cap, the magnificent seven, the growth component of the market. And if you look at the year-to-date, you can see the outperformance of large caps, that is the S and P 500. So you can see that twenty two percent return. The growth is where we find the dominant, again, with the magnificent seven, twenty four percent. Then value, small caps and mid, you can see respectable numbers, but dominated by the the large cap growth side. For the quarter, we had a strong rotation to the value side, the small caps and mid caps. So if you look at the three Q numbers there, all nine percent. And the S and P 500 large cap dropped down to around six. So very healthy. The market was so narrow all first half of the year, that this is a good sign. We're waiting for that inflection point, the equity growth side, we're certainly very robustly valued, so good inflection point. On the far right is fixed income. And if you come down about midway aggregate, this is the primary benchmark we use in fixed income. And here, as we know with the Fed with rate decrease, and that has been beneficial to the bond values. So you can see for the quarter, five percent, year-to-date, four percent. So for three Q, everything working in all the broad asset classes, which you'll see reflected in the performance numbers. Any questions on the quick recap of the market?
Don't think so.
Right. So we will go to page fourteen and look at the performance for the the total portfolio. Let me make one comment before we look at the numbers, because we were able, thanks to Michael, to get a copy of Bolton's June thirty, actual, excuse me, actual where I'll report to confirm, I think you're looking at the long-term funding rate that you need to meet liabilities, and that is five point five percent. So just keep that in mind as we look at the numbers below. That currently, to meet the liabilities, we need to be returning that minimum five point five. And if we, let's say, come out for the last five years, take a longer cycle, you can see a little over seven percent. So certainly, the markets have allowed the equity world particularly to contribute to above-average performance over these type of time cycles. And if we back into this last year, here is one year ending on September thirty, you can see a whopping twenty four percent. So when you look at your your funding ratio, this certainly all contributes to that ratio having an opportunity to keep moving in an upward trajectory. And I think I noticed in the Bolt Newport, it was somewhere around forty eight percent funded, which is looking at the historical. But you can see for the the quarter, the result of what we just threw on page four, we're six point eight percent. And year-to-date, twelve. And the only weakness on here is tied to twenty twenty two for the three years. We can see we dropped down to a four point one percent. But as the market has rebounded, certainly this last year, it certainly making up for the damage to portfolios that we all incurred in twenty twenty two. So any questions on a quick snapshot of the annualized performance? If not, let me get a little more granular for you. On the next page, page fifteen, we look at the seven years of calendar year performance from two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty three. And particularly the last five years, where we had a really strong market, as you might recall, in nineteen, twenty, and twenty one, you'll see double-digit returns for all three time periods. And I looked at for three years ending on the fourth quarter twenty twenty one, just to see what those three years looked like when you did a roll-up, and we were returning fourteen percent. So one of the better three-year cycles that I've seen in my career, and certainly very accretive to portfolios. And then you can see the one year, the disastrous two thousand and twenty, where we lost sixteen percent. Only good news, we rebounded fairly well in twenty twenty three, as you can see, returning fifteen percent.
Can I ask, is this chart any different than what we've seen previously? Because if we're looking at calendar year twenty twenty three, you know, that was eleven months ago. So haven't we looked at this chart before? Is this any different now than it has been in previous conversations?
And what will tends to happen on the prior page, obviously, we're looking at what has happened in twenty twenty four with the year-to-date number?
Uh huh.
Twelve percent. So this page is static, and then every new calendar year, we'll pick up twenty twenty four at the end of this calendar year. So these are the actual numbers for those calendar years. So the trick is, don't confuse the three-year look back with the individual year. That's what's getting us messed up.
Got it. Thank you.
Got it. Okay. Okay, one more chart on the total portfolio, then we can shift gears to the the large cap value analysis. But on page sixteen, we always like to look at these three-year rolling cycles. Get away from looking at short time periods, like what happened for the last quarter, the last year. And this provides a confirmation, have we consistently been adding value, or has the portfolio been adding value, and not going below median? As you can see, for all five time periods, even though the three years ending in two thousand twenty, we barely were above median, the forty ninth, but it is all five for five and versus you have a great three years and a bad three years. This takes out some of the noise you get in looking at historical performance and not being always focused on those short time periods. I have a question, if I may. Please. Staying on that same page where we have the rolling three-year periods. Yes. I'm confused as to why our performance, which is the dark dot and the target, why are we always below the target? How is the target calculated? And what are we doing that we're not closer to it? So the target comes out of the investment policy statement. So it looks at the approved asset classes and the percentage allocation to each. And historically, some of it was tied to earlier allocations that David Saunders would have been working on. And these are meta-fees, the total portfolio performance, where the target is not net. So some of the time periods, particularly when we get into the calendar years where it's fairly tightly banded, it is the impact of costs. And we made changes. Let me give a time period for you on a number of the managers that are currently in the portfolio. So looking at large cap, we made changes back in November last year. The Fuller and Thaler has only been in there for a couple of years, the MFS for a couple of years. So we have a short time period for a number of the funds. If you turn to page twenty for a minute, maybe I could put this in some context for you too. And particularly with the funds I just mentioned. So we look at Fuller and Thaler, this is the small cap. And we've had a one-year history. And you can see a return of thirty five percent versus twenty six for the index. The international with MFS right along with the index at twenty five point three. So not the value we're looking for in the long run. So example, that fund, MFS, is in the seventh percentile and outperformed by about two percent over the long term. And then twenty one, again, this has only been in for a year-to-date, the Dodge and Cox at five, seven versus four, four. So we are living with legacy funds that did not perform as well as the replacements. We'll take the next step with that, where Coho has been disappointing and has contributed to that underperforming against the target. And what we've had with their more recent performance is they have been way too defensive. And I'll show you some numbers on that as we go into the actual large cap value search. And as a result, just not participating on the upside. And that contributes to that type of underperformance that you had looked at will be plot total fund versus target. So solid steps going forward with pre-new funds, and I think you'll find we've got a good solution for Coho to add a fund in the large cap value space that has a good balance.
Can we jump to that in the interest of time?
We certainly can. So I will start on page seven, where we look at historical performance for Coho and the two funds that we've added, Dodge and Cox, some of you might be familiar with Dodge and Cox, very well-known mutual fund family. And then one less known, Smeed, that we have a long history of working with. And let me set the stage here.
And this is in the large cap value equity document, page seven of this?
Yes, so the cover. And so on page seven, on that mid-left, you'll see this e-vestment, US Large Cap Value. So there's the peer universe. And these performance numbers are net of fees. These are mutual funds. And as you come, and I'm going to start with a ten-year number. And as you work down, you see the median. So here's the median return for this peer universe of large cap value mutual funds, nine, seven. The index is at the very bottom, and that is a real so one thousand value. So this is a large cap value peer universe, and that's the appropriate passive index. Also a nine percent return. You can see that Coho, here's our problem, underperformed both the median and the peer universe and the passive index. And then with Dodge and Cox and Smeed, you can see certainly outperformance, Dodge and Cox at eleven percent, Smeed at twelve, and to the right, so Jaffa for Smeed, six, puts him in the sixth percentile, so they outperformed ninety four percent of the large cap value funds. And if you work your way across to seven, five, three, you'll see consistently Smeed is the the better performer. Dodge and Cox certainly very, very competitive. But Smeed has just had a just had a better consistency in their performance, which I'll, I'll show you here in a minute. So we are certainly looking at Smead as a fund that would be a upgrade from, from Koho. On the next page, again, calendar years are always very insightful. So you can see that strong performance for Smead. But what we are always very cognizant of is what happens in down markets. So we have three down years, fifteen, eighteen and twenty two. And let me start with fifteen, where the median fund was off two point eight six. And if you come down below to the Russell one thousand index, that was off three point eight. And when I look at Smead, they actually were positive. You see one point eight five and in the fifth percentile. The Koho, my comments earlier being very defensive, they also did very well. But as markets rotate, and I'll show you that particularly on twenty twenty two, that's where Smead has not kept up. So two thousand eighteen, we all remember that four Q that was very, very devastating, median fund off eight, six, the Russell index off eight. You can see again, Koho, very, very offensive and Smead held up very well, even though it's negative, but was in the eighteenth percentile, half of what the median lost and half of what the benchmark lost. Then our infamous two thousand twenty two, where the average fund was off five, eight, index off seven and a half. Again, Koho held up very well. And Smead was two point five, three in the twenty first percentile. So they had that very strong performance. Ten, seven, five, three, but also plotted very, very well in those three down year market periods. And so my comment on Koho not keeping up when markets rotated. So you can see they did hold up very well on twenty twenty two, where the average fund lost five and eight, five point eight, and they're off two, six. But when the market rotated in twenty twenty three, you can see Dodge and Cox both up to seventeen percent. But Koho dislanguished. It was just in too much of a defensive mode and didn't participate in the, the market turnaround. And let me stop there. There's a lot of data I was throwing at you. Might have some questions or things that I need to explain, maybe in more detail.
So it sounds like you are recommending moving from
From Koho to Smead.
And didn't we used to have Dodge and Cox? Yes, we did. Okay, that's what I thought. And I guess, like, was Smead on your radar a year ago or whenever it was that we even switched to Koho in the first place? I, I feel like we're chasing a rabbit on this.
We started out putting in both Koho and Edgewood, Edgewood on the growth side. And the premise was Edgewood is very aggressive, high standard deviation, does well in the big momentum markets. And it takes on more risk. So in down markets can be a bit more punishing. And in our search, we wanted to look at a value fund that had a more defensive positioning. And Koho felt that, did that. But since we put that in there several years ago, it has really faltered. And the end result, we're just dissatisfied with the loss of the opportunity on the upside and it's not outperforming the peer universe. Know with the index.
Got it. Okay. Um, do we, are there any other?
Let me show you one other chart if we have a minute for that. This gets into the ten year stats on page thirteen, where we talk about risk and up markets, down markets. And let me go to up market capture, which is to the right hand side of the column. And you'll see that the Russell index is one hundred. So this is the bogey we go by. And if we look at Smead, you see that one, one, three. That puts them in the sixth percentile. So on the up market, they had a higher up market than ninety four percent of the peer universe. And I'll use the index as an example. If the index went up ten, Smead was going up eleven point three. So capturing more of that upside and what made them such a strong option here is on the down market, which is to the right. And use the same comparison. If the index went down ten, they were down ten point six. So they really participated on the up based upon those three calendar years, twenty two, eighteen and fifteen, where they held up very well. You can see we weren't penalized on the downside if we were owning Smead. And it's that combination of good risk control and participating in that upper decile of the peer universe over long time cycle.
Uh, any questions from our trustees before we move on? Okay. Al, thank you very much. We have a lot to chew on and think about here.
Yep, that's fine, Michael. We can follow up after you finish the meeting and let us know what we should do for the next step.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir. Have a good rest of the day. Have a great weekend.
Likewise. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. Bye bye.
All right, moving back then, we will go to the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget report. And let's look at page three. I am concerned about one thing. The circulation collection is at twenty five percent spent now. There'll be money that's encumbered, meaning we're expecting to get these books. And we've got money set aside that's not reflected in these numbers yet. But I would like to see us spending this whole amount. So we will ask that orders be stepped up. I think we should have spent at least thirty three percent of the collections, so on, on the collection so far. So we will, we will, we will be escalating our book orders here.
Um, I just want to make a point on that. We actually have put Brittany in charge of acquisitions and she is creating a better system for our orders to make sure that they are staying on cycle. And this is actually better than most years at this point. So we are working really hard towards that. And, and we, there is, like Michael said, always a delay. We do have, some of it has been encumbered. We just don't have the bills yet.
Yeah.
Actually, there is an issue with Ingram right now, too. They have a shipping backup. So they moved headquarters or they moved buildings. And so they have a huge delay in the materials getting shipped out and we don't get billed for them until we receive them. So that is why that is behind, not that our staff aren't ordering.
Let's, uh, let's move it up. Um, and I saw Brittany working with acquisitions yesterday. So glad to see that we are making some strides there. Digital collection is largely spent, but that's not at all unusual. So we are going to skip over to.
Hi.
Yeah.
I have a question on the mobile library.
Mm hmm.
Really back to salaries. Is there a way, I, I assume the mobile library salaries are included in admin?
They're in admin, yes.
Is there a way we could break that out? I think we had talked about metrics for the mobile library and true costs. We do a sub line under salaries or something for mobile library?
Um, not within this fiscal year. We can talk about it next fiscal year. Um, I'd have to, it's a, we're, like I said, we're switching payroll companies. I have to create, it's a general ledger. Creation of, uh, uh, creating an entirely new accounting line for them. And, um, putting that into the general ledger that is also connected to the payroll. So we can talk to Michael about it and, and our pay velocity people.
I think that's something we'd like to see for total mobile library expenses. We were kind of thinking of it like its own branch in a way, you know, what is it, what does it cost? So I think we'd be really interested to see something like that.
I would like to point out that, um, if you break out that as a separate branch, and this may not be a problem, but, um, there's only three people in that department. And so you will know pretty much how much they're being paid.
On this line, which is public. Which their salaries are technically public, but this makes it easier.
All right. Let's, let's think about that.
Which is the reason we hadn't done it yet. We were hoping to build that department a little higher so that when we do break it out, it's not quite so.
Well, if we were asked the question or if we asked you, could you give us an estimate fairly close with the law? This is pretty much what it costs.
Definitely.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Michael, please. Thank you.
If you look over on page four, you'll see that, yes, we're still high on furniture equipment for Lexington Park and Charlotte Hall, but that's because we've done the first payment on the upgrade of the AV systems there. And so as I say, things are really pretty much within tolerance for the most part. You look over on page ten, you'll see that, um, we have got seventy seven percent of the interest we were expecting to get from the MLG IP account. So that account where basically money goes in, it will be taken out for our use from the state, for example, that is paying a nice bit of interest for us these days. And really, um, uh, those are kind of the only things I saw other than the very last page, page ten. I want to take a look at the very bottom and give us a new term. And that term is going to be rainy day fund. Instead of where it says total fund balance available minus restricted funds, we're going to start calling that the rainy day fund. And there's a reason for it. And we'll get to that when we do the audit. The audit is saying fund balance is, to simplify, all the cash we have right now on hand. Everything. They're calling that the fund balance. And what we're trying to get at here is here's the money that is earmarked to be spent. Here's restricted funds. Here's the amount, as it were, that is not dedicated to something. And that amount as of the day is four hundred eighty three thousand, six hundred ninety three dollars. So that's not quite one month worth of expenses. So in the future, we're going to say, we're going to call this a rainy day fund. That, that figure for you, just to try to clarify.
Okay, you have to clarify that, clarify for that. So your total funds on hand, I see that. Your restricted funds. And the
The fund balance was much in the MLG IP minus the restricted funds.
So total fund balance available.
If you, if you look at what, if you look at the restricted funds right now, they're at negative one fifty four.
Right.
And the reason is because at the end of September, we did not have either of our deposits. And I needed to be able to run the first payroll in October. So I had to move money that we did not have yet. That amount is the November payment from the state. So when I receive that and at the end of November, that will go back to just a small positive number because you, uh, it, it will be replaced. I won't take it out in November because I've taken it out in September. So with that amount that we're going to get back, it's four eighty three. Is your, is your rainy day fund?
I, I don't know why we don't just leave it the way it is because we can read the line and understand how to calculate it. I, I've never heard of an accounting term rainy day fund, but if you wanted to put it afterwards in parentheses or something.
That's fine. We'll do that. But, but because the audit is saying fund balance is something different than what we're trying to get at there. We want a separate term for it.
Yeah, the audit term fund balance is different than what we are using fund balance as.
I see audit following Gatsby and accounting standards. And you want to do something different than that. I'm not.
We're not doing something different, but the way that we talk about it is you always want to know exactly how much is left in our account that is not accounted for. That is not a fund balance. Fund balance is all of our cash that's in there. Which some of that is restricted and some of that is operating funds. So the difference in the restricted and the operating funds versus what's just in there always is the rainy day fund or whatever you would like to call it. But the fund balance name is different than what we are talking about.
So isn't that what we and the county calls an unassigned fund balance? So there's no obligation against these.
Yes, it can be unassigned fund balance.
The unassigned fund balance, because that's consistent with the county and what's in.
We, we're happy to call it whatever you would like, but you've always been wanting to know that number. So.
But you always recognized it was an unassigned.
Yeah, because the, um, the audit is saying fund balance, we don't want that to be a confusing term. So we'll call it the unassigned fund balance.
They use the term unassigned fund balance in the audit.
Yeah, we.
And they have a number with it.
Yeah, it's still the, it's still the number of all of our cash. Mostly.
Minus restricted.
Minus restricted.
And this is the cash minus restricted.
Yeah. So we're trying to get that number for you because you have asked. If you don't want that number, we just won't do it anymore. Yeah.
Yeah, that's the only thing we're doing is trying to make sure that when you look at the audit, you're not comparing that number to what we talk about as a fund balance.
Kind of very little.
Okay, so we did get the actuarial report. And we've given that to you. And basically it talks about the OPEB account, what the future of that might be, what we might be expected to have to put into it.
Um, Michael, which document is this?
This is the
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And I'd like to look at two pages in particular. And the first one is on page four. And the reason to look at that is it's basically where we are at the end of fiscal year twenty four, that is June thirtieth of this year. Um, they are saying the total OPEB liability is four point one eight seven million. And at that time, our, we had, uh, one million, four hundred sixty two thousand in the account. So they're saying that's the total liability for the very distant future. Um, and you'll look at this report, you say they've got year twenty forty seven included in this. So they're looking way, way out. That's about thirty five percent funded. And this, I think, will be important for your later discussion that we have to talk about just certain investments of public funds, which you'll be doing later. And if you look at page fourteen, you see a lot of this is guesswork. So for example, fiscal year ending, they're saying that our beginning fiduciary net position will be one million, four hundred sixty three thousand, three, two hundred thirty five dollars. Our account is already worth over one point five million. So, you know, they're, they're really projecting, looking ahead. Um, you see that by the year twenty forty seven, we should start with money in the account of two million, six hundred seventy seven and seven hundred fifty six dollars. And then there's contributions from the current participants, what they think the benefits will be, what they think the account will, will earn. So I, I don't think it's quite as dire as we've got to get to four million dollars in that account, if you look at that page.
Can I ask, Michael?
Yeah.
I'm unclear. On this page fourteen, is this assuming a certain level of?
Five point five, five point five percent growth in the fund.
You mean to fund or is that solely on interest based on current investments?
Um, I believe it's based on us continuing to add, to put in contributions.
At the ADC, right?
Yeah, that's page thirteen. This is what they're assuming that, you know, the library will put in.
I see. Thank you. I see. Thank you.
Um, so you see that most of those um, will be contributions for current participants. You know, we do have people who are paying in to this. They're paying a share of their um, uh, uh, of their amounts, but um, you know, it's um. I, I think it's just a a, as I say, I, I, I don't think we can look at this and say, okay, this is definitely where we have to be in year twenty forty seven in this account.
But isn't the trap that we are actually paying out of operating expenses, which counts as a contribution?
Yeah, we are, we are paying, we are paying um, on a pay-go basis. It, this past fiscal year was ninety seven thousand dollars. Yeah.
But those dollars aren't earning anything.
That's correct.
That's correct. Yes, they're, they're not going into this account. That's just paying the healthcare costs.
So we gotta be careful that when we talk about growth and putting in. We're not really contributing right now to the investments we're paying off the operating costs.
Now, we have given you the figures of what we have put in in the past. I don't have them today. But we, we have done some investments the last five years. Um, but we will see when we're looking at the audit, um, what the amount um, we cleared this year is. And I'll tell you, it's eight thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars.
And John, you are correct. Yes, the audit shows that the money we pay for retirees and health insurance is counted as contributions into the Schwab account and then deducted. It is a wash. It's counted and then taken out.
Yeah, it looks like we put it in, take it out. We don't do that, but that's how they.
That's how, that's how it gets. Yeah.
So um. But yeah, but no, I mean, to be clear, nobody's putting no employees are putting money into the investment account. Um, they're paying their share.
They're paying their share.
Out of their, I assume their um, retirement um, annuity or something, which is through the.
Yeah, they're, they're paying their share however they do it.
To the county.
They get a paycheck once a month. The insurance is deducted from that paycheck from the state. And the state gives us a solid check uh, for each um, month.
So on our FY twenty five budget, under OPEB, we have ninety six thousand. Is that? Is that the, is that similar to this total library contribution of one hundred and forty one thousand for twenty twenty five? Or is that just going to pay the operating costs?
No, the ninety six thousand is, will count in towards that. I don't know what all they count for that contribution on this report.
Okay.
But yeah, the ninety six thousand is part of that contribution.
Okay, that's good. Thank you for clearing.
And also I want to be clear that you understand that everything in here, anything in the audit related to OPEB comes straight from Bolton. The auditors take this and put it into the audit.
So that's sort of where we are with the OPEB. Um, and I know that you're going to be having discussion later about what, how, how you would like to be proceeding with that. So I, I think we, at this point, we can go ahead and leave this unless you've got further questions for now.
Thank you, Michael.
Um, we've had the report from Asset Strategy. Um, so uh, last month, um, Belinda and Mary Ann were at the Maryland Association of Public Library Administrators or MAPLE meeting. And there they found out that as of this upcoming July one, July one, twenty twenty five, St. Mary's County is going to be the only library system in Maryland collecting fines. And this year, uh, this past fiscal year, it was thirty two thousand, three hundred twenty three dollars. We know the benefits of going fine free and Calvin and Charles are fine free. We do think we've lost some customers across the river because it's not that far away and they don't have to pay fines, even if they're returning something checked out from St. Mary's County Library there. The materials come back. There is no, once you stop doing fines, it's not like people just stop bringing things back. And we also have a system in place to remind them that we're owed things. Circulation goes up when you go fine free because people are less concerned about, oh, I might get a library fine. Um, we think it especially benefits people in the county who may not be as affluent as others. So for the upcoming budget that you're going to see in December, I am going to present it to you without fine income. I don't want to be the last library in Maryland taking fines.
Can you explain what exactly do we find? Because I know there's an automatic renewal, right? When you take a book out.
Well, let's, let's.
You get the little message.
Well, yeah, so I, I can explain this to you. There's a limit on automatic renewals. So if somebody's had something checked out for that limit, they'll start getting fines. If a reserve is on a book, it will not automatically renew. Um, so if you don't bring the book back, um, you'll start accruing fines and it's not particularly expensive. Um, but um, that's kind of what we, we do uh, get fines for. And again, it's about thirty two thousand uh, a year. Um, so I think we will just try to find some way to balance that out and you, you'll see that budget then.
Okay, so yeah, that would be my question. So I agree with you that all the benefits you've mentioned are the goals of the library. But also thirty two thousand dollars is like a person's salary. And so figuring out where that's coming from at this point, I'm not. This is going to sound terrible, but increasing circulation is going to make our problem worse. And the problem is with the commissioners making sure that they can cover that thirty two thousand dollars, not with I, it, it does go against the principles that we have and the principles that we want for the library. But I'm not sure that increasing circular, the benefits that we see will actually solve the problem in any.
I am going to present the budget without fines and you can see it then and you can agree to it or not. But this will be my recommendation for this library and.
Talking about the FY twenty six budget.
Yes, yes. It's not going to be this year. And, and that's precisely why we've never done it before is I've always told people that somebody's you know, it's a twenty one hour uh, a week salary, but I, I do think that it's past time um, for us. And as I say, I don't know that being the only library system that's doing it um, is something that I want associated with us. Um, it may seem fiscally responsible, but I think we can find some other way of of balancing out the budget.
This doesn't come offset it. But there is a small percentage that we will get back because we will not have to pay unique anymore, which is our collections.
Well, I mean, I think we've started with the um, looking at the contracts and finding savings in our contracts, right? With the.
Well, and in fact, we'll be saving twenty thousand a year on payroll.
And if we continue on that path, trash, AV, all the supports, the, the legal contracts, everything we have, we continue to carve out, I think we could find thirty two thousand dollars. I'm not a fan of going back to the commissioners and asking for an additional thirty two thousand dollars. I wouldn't support that. But if we can offset it with our um,
Oh.
With just, you know, like carving out where we have a little bit of we have room to save, say that. And by, by due diligence and looking at these contracts hard and negotiating further, we could probably come up with the remaining balance.
Just, just to be clear, when we present our budget request, I wasn't going to be saying, give us this um, so we don't pay, uh, we don't collect fines. I, 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 I think that that's a difficult message to do. We want this money, but incidentally, we're giving up that.
Yeah, I understand.
I think we find something internal and I'm, I'm totally agreeing with you right now. I think we can find ways to realize that. The other, the main benefit of this really is going to be a boost in staff morale. So um, if you look at the organizational climate survey, you've talked to our frontline staff, the main source of discontent they have is people coming in being angry about library fines. Um, so I do think that this will also represent a boost in morale for our staff and make their jobs better.
Just as a sidebar, that might be a generational viewpoint because I tell you, folks, my age, we grew up with library fines. That was your incentive. They were only a nickel. But, oh golly, that was your message to get the book back.
I, I, I share, yeah, I, I mean, I, I share Sharon's and Judith's concerns. Uh, and so it'll be interesting to see the proposed budget. I think, I think about our conversations about I'm with the lack.
Right.
Um, actually, um, okay, go ahead.
About how because I'm not familiar with that.
There might be intangible benefits that eventually uh, result in tangible benefits if, if we go in that direction.
And don't forget, half of our circulation is already fine free because by law, children's and are not.
Yeah, we, we can't charge fines to anybody seventeen and under anyway, so.
I mean, but it's, it's thirty two thousand bucks. That's a lot of money.
It's not one time, it's every year.
Yeah.
How does the um, how the fines work when, when suppose I request a book that is, is shelved at uh, in the Calvert system, like at, like at uh, Prince Frederick or Twin Beaches. And, and it's overdue on my card. Do, um, do, do I pay the, do I pay the fine to St. Mary's? But if summoning Calvert um, che- checks out a book that is shelved at Lexington Park or Leonard Town and um, and it's overdue, do they not get fined by their home cat, home library?
So if they return it here, if they checked it out here and returned it here, um, they, they will have a fine. If they return it to one of the other um, counties, there will not be.
They will not. So it's, it's, it's totally where it's returned, not where it's shelved?
Yes, um, and, and um, part of the, but part of the, the fines that we take in as income includes, for example, lost item payments. Um, and so we're not doing away with lost item payments. We do still require customers to pay for lost items. So I don't believe that we will see a complete reduction um, as to thirty two thousand. Um, people are still going to be paying for lost items in that line item.
But wait, doesn't that thirty two thousand, the lost items, you have to then go and repurchase?
We, we do, but that's part of our operating funds.
That's coming out of circulation.
Yeah, well, do, okay. Um, and I do want to point out, I can probably get you numbers or at least some semblance of numbers, at least for the last year or this year. Uh, most of that, I don't want to say most, a, a lot, the the most expensive thing to do is replace items. Not fines. Fines are twenty five cents. So a lot of that thirty five thousand is actually lost item replacements. So we can look at what that cost was maybe for last year. I can try to work with Sarah and see if she can help me get some numbers. We should be able to do that. It's a little tricky because of the way Polaris works when they pay fines, but I'll see what I can come up with, if I can come up with something.
But if the product is returned, if you then turn around and repurchase it, it's a wash.
Except that.
That's not really free.
Except that when they repurchase it, it comes out of collections and not out of fines. So it's coming from it's like coming in through this line item and coming out of.
That's an accounting gimmick. You're, you're paying for it.
Right, but.
Somewhere.
Right, but the point is then it doesn't, the thirty two thousand income is not evenly distributed well.
And, and that's the way it already works as well. So we're kind of accounting for that process already. Um, so we can get you the fine numbers versus the lost item, ream, the, the lost item payments.
Thank you. Remember too, just because something is lost, doesn't mean we actually go out and buy it again.
Hmm.
Um, that it, it might be something older that we said, okay, that's, we're just not going to, you know, replace that particular item.
Or it comes back and has to be reimbursed.
Well, if we, okay, so two questions. One is, I think you said before that if somebody paid for a lost item and they later come back, so I cleaned up my closet and I found it, we reimburse them.
We reimburse their funds.
Can we?
There's stipulations.
Kind of wonder about that policy.
There are stipulations.
If you've lost a book, we had to go take care of all this work and then you want your ten dollars back. I don't know if that's a great policy. But the second one is if we don't have a fine for late fees, at what point do you say this book is lost and you owe us for the entire book?
So those things are already built into our system. First of all, the stipulation for lost items is you must find it within thirty days of paying your um, fee. Okay, so you have, you only have thirty days after paying for the lost item to be reimbursed for the lost item. Um, so, and they must have the receipt and all of that. They have to prove that they did it, that they paid for it. And it was within thirty days. We don't reimburse it after thirty days because then we have started that entire process of reordering. Um, as far as the other thing is, the Polaris, our collection system does that. If something doesn't come back for a certain amount of time, it is marked as lost on their file. And after a certain amount of time, it is cleared in the system after that. And that is a process that is set for Polaris for all of the counties. It is a standard process.
Six months or something, I think, isn't it? Or three months?
I don't.
It's a certain number of renewals.
Well, that's renewal. So it's, you can do up to four renewals as long as nobody has it on hold.
Right.
If, if a book is on hold, your renewals do not continue. But at, it's, it's after the final due date, it's a certain amount of time before it's marked as lost. Twenty one days, thank you. And then once it's marked lost, there's a whole other process to clear it from the system.
Part of the thirty days is um, so what often will happen is somebody come in, I just can't find it. And then I, it's under my car seat or the kid hid it under something. So it, it really is just a way to try to help people use the library without feeling like we're out there trying to get every nickel that we can. Um, so I do think that um, that this will be what we're presenting and we will have further discussion at the time and we'll try to break out for you at that time. What is, what is actual fine? What is a lost item?
Thank you. And I would like to congratulate the trustees on not being familiar with these lost books and fines. And it looks like we're all returning our materials in a timely way. So good for us.
Um, Michael, um, uh, I will do one more item and maybe a break. Uh, okay, um, Lexington Park security update. I, I looked at whether or not I could do this in closed session. Um, and the state would allow it, but St. Mary's County more restrictive. Open Meeting Act does not talk about uh, disposal of security assets. Um, so about a month ago, if you were reading the paper, you know that there were some people arrested for carjacking here in this parking lot. Um, and we allowed the sheriff's deputies to use the outside cameras to help with that. And that's not the first time we've done that. Now, Maryland law is very strict about what you can do with sort of library visits. Inside, we require a subpoena to look at footage unless it's to prevent an imminent crime. Outside, it's a little bit more, it's a public area. So we're not quite so restrictive. Um, they don't have to come to me because the whole process, they got to get library director. You, you have to have a subpoena. Um, so we let them, you know, use the camera. They did, they were able to do that. Now, as I say, it's not the first time that's happened. We got an estimate um, for forty two thousand dollars to enhance the cameras and also to add some motion activated lights here at the library. Um, so we, you know, we, we've said for most of the security audit things that we've done, we've done the kind of the low hanging, the, the very little cost sorts of things. This would be something extra. I have, and I shared with you the email letter from Sheriff Steve Hall supporting this. Um, so where I am with it right now is I talked to the county commissioners when we had the Veterans Day Parade. Um, hey, you, what, how could we get this money? And their first thing they said is talk to um, State's Attorney Jamie Sterling. So I have an emailing with her. Um, she has been able to get grants that um, would possibly pay for this, or maybe she can tell us how we could move forward on that. So that is letting you know that I, I'm in kind of negotiating to try to find some way to get that money. Um, and to do that security upgrade here. Um, so uh, we do have wonderful relations with the sheriff's department here. Um, uh, they look upon us as partners in the community. And if we can have this upgrade that will allow the cameras to do something like be able to read license plates. So um, we're, we're looking at that and I will report back to you. Um, we, we may, if we can't find some other way uh, do it as an emergency request to the county, we may ask for it next fiscal year. Or it could possibly be at some point, you'll decide to look at that four hundred thousand dollar um, unassigned fund balance and say, hmm, let's do this. So that's just kind of where we are with that.
Michael, is that forty two thousand, is that the result of a competitive?
It is not. And before we did that, we would move forward with the competitive bid. That's a bid from Sharp um, locally here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would you, um, consider in the future doing the other two branches, doing this with the other two branches? I, I mean, I understand it's a little different down here, but I would like to see it be proactive with security rather than wait for something to happen. And certainly if we get to the point of renovating Charlotte Hall, I'd like to see all these, um, security enhancements we've been doing to be part of that renovation. So we don't have to go back and get it.
I would think that Charlotte Hall would be more a target than Leonard Town. And that's nothing to say about the communities. It's where the library is. So Charlotte Hall is located on Route, uh, right, two thirty five, Route five, two thirty five, a major thoroughfare into the county. And so when we are looking at parking lot incidents, we tend to see them there. More frequently than, than at St. Leonard Town where, um, it's really not as located on, on busy a thoroughfare or as busy for walking and other things as this particular area.
Does Leonard Town have any outside cameras?
Um, it's got, it's got some, but it doesn't have any out in the parking lot per se.
Well, I think something to keep in mind for the future is again, we get ahead of this curve and be proactive with our security enhancements and.
Well, uh, we will.
But then wait for something to happen and then we have to kind of backtrack on it. If, if we had all the money in the world, that's what I'd do.
Well, if we had all the money in the world, um, um, I would, I would buy property on, uh, in Golden Beach on the Patuxent River and build a library that makes Twin Beaches look like nothing. So, um, we don't have all the money in the world.
Michael, I appreciate you working through all of these channels to chase this down. Thank you.
All right. So I, I think, uh, before we get to action items, then, um.
Yeah. So can we entertain a motion for a five minute break?
I'm moved.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Thank you, Sharon. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Big motion passes. Five minutes.
Linda.
Ten forty eight. Pretty good? You ready? Okay. Welcome back, everybody. We're going to continue our meeting. Uh, Michael, let's tackle these action items.
Okay, um, the first action item is going to be the audit and, uh, I see that we already have questions and we already have answers. Um, so I think we'll go ahead and start with those and Belinda, if you would please. And then we'll review just some of the things about the audit. Um, our goal is to have all your questions answered and we hope since you've had some, a week to look at it to approve this, uh, for a final version with any changes that you might like to see.
Uh, I thought the auditors were going to be here.
They are eleven thirty.
So we need to go through the audit first because the auditor is not, they will answer questions for you, but they're really going to just present how they do the audit. These numbers are from us and I can answer every question about the numbers. If you still have questions after that, then those are what you'll take to the auditor. So I want to start with John's questions. The first one about us not being a component unit of St. Mary's County Library. We are, we are a government entity. We spent the last two years researching that with our accountant and other legal entities. And we are a county government entity, even though we are not direct employees of the county. Just like.
Do you have a, a legal opinion on that?
Yes.
Can you share that with us?
Yep, but it's also part of.
Email it out later.
Yep.
I think, sorry, John, jump, it's your comment, but, um, what I saw was later on, the auditors is a different term. It says for financial statement purposes, we are a component of the county.
Yep.
That's a, that's a different, that's a very, that's a much more narrow.
We are a, we are a county government entity because we are financially a county government entity. We are also not a five oh one C three. We are not a public business. We are not under the public businesses in the state of Maryland. If you look us up, we are defunct because at one point we were separate and an actual business. We are not. Our FEI N number is the number that is given to a county government entity. We are a county government entity. We do not fall under anything else. Any questions on that first one?
So the statement in the audit really is not inaccurate.
It ju- it just conflicts with what's said later.
We're both. We are a county government entity and we are financially a county government entity. We can be both things.
No, it's not talking about what says for financial purpose, for financial statement purposes, we're treated as a component unit of the St. Mary's County.
Yes.
Doesn't say that we are, it says reasons if the auditors are saying they're not really, but for financial statement purposes, we're treating this way.
Is that sixty page sixteen?
Because, because both are true. Financially, we are treated as a component, just like metcom and just like the housing. That is who we fall under. And legally, based on our FEI N number, the state and everything else, we are a county government entity.
So, yeah, if you could share that, is that from a county attorney?
It's.
State's attorney.
It's not from either. We, we, we researched with, uh, our accountant, we researched with the lawyer and then we looked it up. Our FEI N number is the number that is given to a county government entity. In order for us to be anything else, we would have to change everything about us. We'd need a new federal ID number. We'd have to re, reset ourselves with the state as a business. We would have to be audited completely differently.
We also.
Go ahead.
And we are not a five oh one C. We do not fall under a nonprofit five oh one C three.
I, I think we should move forward because I think we're going to have a lot more questions once we get to the heart of the matter.
Oh, just one final comment. That is we have an MOU and operate through the county's benefit system. I, I, this is not an inaccurate statement.
So the second one, page five, uh, note the use of possessive of our, and just so you note, the title of each of those is a manager's management discussion. That is the library speaking. The auditors ask us to comment on the numbers and that is what we do. So we are speaking for the library.
So pages four through nine is written in the library voice.
Yes. Um, same page, paragraph five, the OPEB account relies on the services of asset strategy with charges for its advisory services. Why would that not make paragraph five incorrect? Paragraph five says that the, that we do not have any, uh, any services that are charged to customers. We do not charge our customers for asset strategy.
What, what page was that?
Page five, paragraph five. The library has no proprietary funds where, where and customers are charged for the cost of services provided. We do not charge customers for the OPEB or asset strategy. That statement is correct. Page nine, page nineteen. The deferred outflows and resources, and you want to know about why, explain why the carryover of funding wouldn't be appropriate to note here. Because we've already paid, we paid for it the previous fiscal year using the previous fiscal year's funding. It's just cash on hand. That's not having to do with income or expenses. That's cash on hand, which is different. Our income was already noted as being in that fiscal year and the expenses within that fiscal year. It's noted correctly as income and expenses in the correct years. It's just cash on hand that's carried over. The next page of John's questions is page twenty four, paragraph eight. Um, we've purchased certificates of deposit. We did not.
That, that was the library foundation, not the library. And the library foundations finances are completely separate and not in the audit.
Um, so that, that language, that was the page you gave us, it's a different language.
I didn't give you any extra pages.
What page?
Is there?
Page twenty four, paragraph eight is what, uh, John is referring to. It's twenty four, paragraph eight. He wrote, "The library recently purchased several certificates of a deposit, deposit, but they have not been after, they may have not have been at the beginning of the first full year confirmed. The CDs were not owned in FY twenty four. We never purchased anything."
Have CDs. The foundation has CDs.
Foundation.
Yeah. Thank you. And the foundation, unlike the board, we should note, the board Vanguard accounts are counted in this audit. Um, I, next year, we've asked them to more strongly, they'll still have to be included, but more strongly separate them out. So they're easy to see without, but, um, those do include the board's Vanguard money. But it doesn't include friends' money that the friends have on hand and it doesn't include foundation money. Those are separate agencies.
We can get to that when we get to the numbers. Um, I want to skip the next one, which is John's thing on page twenty eight. I'll come back to it. The very last request, page thirty five, paragraph two, line five. Um, this line has no entries implying no costs in having the OPEB plan recommendation is why are there no administrative costs in the administrative expenses? Again, everything in the audit from, from for OPEB, it comes from Bolton. Bolton analyzes Schwab's account. And then what we pay in for the retirees, the administrative costs for asset strategies are in our general operating funds. So they do not show up in Bolton or in the OPEB audit. So they are denoted solely in our general operating funds as part of our accounting. So the only way to do that is if asset, the OPEB account is paying asset strategy itself and not us, but we are putting that into our general operating fund.
How do we pay Bolton?
We pay out of our general operating fund.
They give us an invoice.
What line is that?
Accounting and audit.
You know about how much that runs? I know we pay, we pay, um,
Asset Strategy.
The financial statement orders around ten, eleven.
Asset strategy is about ten to eleven. Uh, S and B is about ten. Um, and Bolton, I think is about six, but I need to look that one up. I cannot remember off the top of my head.
So both those audits are under accounting.
Yeah.
Accounting and audit. So page twenty eight is the only one I don't have a very clear answer for you on, and that is that John asks, um, that there are no statutory or contractual requirements to provide these benefits, which means the retirees' benefits. And there's a need to be a reconciliation of the OPEB saying it's an irrevocable trust. So that's not us or them. The OPEB is called an irrevocable trust and you would need to find from Bolton, not even the auditors, Bolton, as to why and what and you can do with it, or why it is officially called that. I don't know. That's an accounting term. But as far as the, we do not have contractual requirements to provide retirement funds. We do it based on the county and the county can make those changes at any time as well as you can. So the first part of that is correct. We have no statutory or contractual requirements to provide this. But the irrevocable fund trust that, that OPEB is called is not my call or the auditors. It is whatever was OPEB was set up as, and you'd have to actually talk to Bolton about what that specifically means. But we have talked to Bolton about and our lawyers about whether or not we have to have OPEB and we do not.
And I provided a letter to you from Bolton saying that it is not a requirement.
So those are John's questions. Does anyone have specific questions on numbers? Because I'm ready for those.
I do want to point out one specific number for you. It's on page eight, and this is an area where separating out the trustees' funds from the library funds will be helpful. It says, "Actual operating expenses were ten thousand nine hundred eighty five dollars less than operating revenues." That includes the increase in the board's Vanguard amounts. Our actual, and we'll have a document to show you this in a while, our actual amount of, um, income versus outgo is eight thousand one hundred thirteen dollars. That's what we cleared. So if you want to have some sense of, do you want to put this in the OPEB, that eight thousand one hundred thirteen would be the amount that you could use um, as, as it were, here's what we gained in the year.
If you have questions on how we get to that number, that's what I can answer.
It's not here because this number includes the, um, the, the board account. We have a separate document that show, to show you that.
So if you want to pull up the FY twenty four budget, final budget.
Adjustments?
Either one, they're the same thing.
It says with adjustments.
There's two and it's the same one.
Use the one with adjustments because we'll be looking at that one eventually.
And on page seven, the grade line has our total expenses and revenue. And it says the collected to date and the spent to date, and the difference between that is the final number, eight thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars. So the but the audit will mention several different numbers, and they always start with what was budgeted versus what was spent. But what was budgeted isn't necessarily what the income, the income is different than what's budgeted. So you actually have to do the income versus minus what is spent. So if you have any numbers questions, I can tie the numbers in the audit to our budget.
Not initially, but on page seven.
Of the audit?
Of the audit.
Okay.
So on the paragraph, Roman numeral three, libraries' funds, the bottom of that, we start having this discussion about what to call the unassigned fund balance, and I think we've.
I can't hear you. Hold on.
Uh, I I have uh made a note to make that unassigned fund balance rather than rainy day fund, if that's what you're asking about.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could delete this whole from it should be noted. It's it's never been in the audit before.
That's right, because it's a management's discussion, and we added it in our discussions to to try to explain the difference between their fund balance and what we talk about.
So we have a definition of assigned and unassigned fund balance in the audit. I would be okay with just deleting the whole discussion.
I'd like to keep it. I think it's nicely clarifying.
And so then what are you gonna? What are you gonna replace it with? This amount is not the same as what to be termed.
Well, I I I think you leave that because I think it's a clear statement. It says that this is a snapshot, and that's true. This is not to say that this is what's going to be true today, for example. Um, so I think it's fair to say that this is a snapshot of the library as of that day. On another day, those numbers might be different. Once, for example, we got some payments from the state and the county very late and didn't have a chance to transfer money over, and it already in July we had, so these numbers would actually change.
I think um, the reason we wanted to do this is if you look at the first few lines of that paragraph, it tells you that the library had a total governmental fund balance of nine thirty-seven and nine twenty-seven. That is not our fund balance. That is a list of all caches plus state retirement and all of those things combined. So that use of fund balance isn't what's in our MLGIP account, and we've been using that term as fund balance. So trying to explain those two differences within our meetings is what we're trying to do.
And pretend this is a statement.
Because we talk about what's left in the MLGIP account, that is excess funds. But in this audit, it's using that fund balance name as different because it's using the accounting fund balance name.
I I find this paragraph helpful as a layperson, just to kind of like walk through some of these steps, so I I appreciate it.
Questions about any of the specific numbers?
Yeah, probably same conversation. So on page four. And again, we get into this, the bottom of paragraph three. We say the unassigned fund balance is eight fifty-seven, five ninety.
Again, that is the accounting fund balance.
Is that your nine thirty-seven minus some restricted funds?
So the eight fifty-seven comes from. See if I can pull up the right numbers for you. The eight fifty-seven comes from page twelve. You'll see the end of that. Um, under operating fund, eight fifty-seven, five ninety. Okay, so all of that information on that line includes rent and um state retirement benefit that we don't actually have, that is money we put into our employee's state retirement. Um, it also um includes the FOL. It includes the donations. Um, it includes all of those things. That's eight fifty-seven, I believe. Believe, I'm gonna look at my number again. Eighty-seven. Yeah, that's that's that number.
Yeah, the the audit includes so many things that are not actually the library's operating expenses. It can be a little bit difficult to get the full picture.
And again, that's why we we wanted to distinguish the difference between the MLGIP account and the fund balance listed in the audit. Because obviously, the fund balance that we talk about doesn't have eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in it because actually that's the operating fund.
So when you look at the budget report for FY twenty twenty-four and year-end adjustments. There we have a fund balance of five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Again, that eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars includes rent, depreciation, and state retirement.
You mean, you mean uh an obligated amount for those expenses? Or you're just ki- kind of a commitment?
No, it's an obligated amount. Uh, so if you look at page uh twelve, what we were talking about, for to get to that eight fifty-seven. Okay, um, if you look at Lexington Parks Branch, they have a number there of one million nine hundred and four thousand. Um, on page thirty-three. Lexington Parks actual is one million two hundred and eighty-four thousand. And then if you look at page thirty-eight, you can see the cost of rent, the third line down, of six hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty, which then if you look on page thirty-eight, that gets you to the one million nine hundred and four thousand. So all these numbers are grouped differently across the audit to get to the numbers that are on our budget. Because the numbers on our budget is our actual money in and money out.
And if you look at fiscal year twenty-five, the very end of that, as I reviewed with you earlier, that unexpendited fund balance is listed as four hundred eighty-three thousand six hundred ninety-three. You see that this is a snapshot, this audit. Um, if you look at, a- and so is, you know, the fund balance for the end of fiscal year twenty-four, which is five sixty-eight. So these things can go up and down. Kind of what we think we've really got that isn't accounted for as it were.
I mean, this is a real struggle. Everything, everything is a snapshot on June thirtieth. The MBNA recognizes it's June thirtieth. Uh, so have widely varying numbers on our unassigned fund balance. Not not on that, the unassigned fund balances is a struggle for us to understand the position of the library. And again, when I look at the bottom of twenty-four and I see the fund balance minus restricted funds, so it's a million thirty-seven minus twenty-two thousand, but the number we're getting is five hundred sixty-eight. Just looking at this.
It's not a million, um, we're looking at twenty-four, right?
Right, so I'm looking at the formula in here, the total fund balance available minus restricted funds.
It's not, it's not the total fund balance available minus restricted funds.
But you understand, this is a hard read.
It is the.
We look at this, and it says A minus B equals C, and that's not what we have here. We need to see that number.
It's the MLGIP minus the fund balance on that page.
Minus the restricted fund.
Then why doesn't it say that? Why can't we see that number?
Well, I can. I I do the best I can with this. This is the number I create, and I've added those lines throughout these last two years for every request that you've made. So if that's how you would like to do it, I will do that.
I I think that we'd like to see how you determine snapshot, the unassigned fund balance. That's the struggle here. How are you determining? And I understand it can vary month to month and day by day, but if that formula was here, that would help.
The unassigned fund balance, and I can do that, that's the MLGIP minus the the restricted funds. But the fund balance is very simple. I have the MLGIP account, which is the money we have that we do not spend. The state puts money in and we make interest each month. That money is the restricted funds because that is our operating funds, that is our our interest, that is part of our budget or any grants that are put in. So they're restricted until I pull them out. So sometimes I don't get them out before the end of the month, depending on when the month falls and when they put the money in. And so so they'll show as restricted one month, and then I pull them out the next month, so that number stays very close to the same. Because I am only taking out what is put in as operating funds or grants. I am not taking anything else out except when I have to do it to pay a payroll in which I'm putting it right back in.
So that MLGIP is like your deep savings.
MLGIP is our unassigned fund balance.
Your emergency fund.
Yes, it has been the whole time.
So when you talk about restricted funds, so maybe, so I thought restricted funds were strictly um because of the terms of the grant or terms of use, restricted for their use.
Restricted funds can be grants, donations, or FOL, depending on the determined determinations of their use. However, for the MLGIP account, I use that term in general because sometimes our operating funds are in there. It is restricted from you because it's our operating funds. So it's not money for you, it's money for us to put into our operating funds because that's what we're expecting. It's part of our income. I just haven't gotten to pull it out yet.
It's money that has a name to it already, have an obligation on it.
Yes, it's money that has an obligation.
This is our catch-up money.
Belinda, are there other high-level points that we should make sure we kind of address before we talk to these people?
I will say I have been with the accountant and the auditor for two solid weeks. We have done four versions of this to make sure every number is correct. I can match every number from this audit to this budget. Sometimes they're not exact because of the differences. For example, you'll see on page four, it tells you that there is ten thousand dollars left over over budget, right?
Right.
Ten thousand dollars. However, and again, this is the audit thing that we were talking about. Um, if if you look at the profit and loss statement, um as an example, they put some one of the Vanguard's interest and deferred interest into our operating fund. So that is seventeen hundred dollars off because seventeen hundred dollars is yours. That gets us down to the eight thousand one hundred and thirteen, and that shows on the profit and loss statement.
Vanguard investment.
Yes, so one of them. So what we had them do to to denote that is on page, it's on several pages, but I'll just, we had to move it several times in different places because as I said, these numbers go across different line items. Let me just find the right one for you. Um, I think it's page twelve. Okay, so on page twelve, under revenues, the very last one is investment income. They had grouped our, that's our MLGIP income. That's something we use within our income budget. It's actually budgeted as income for us in operating funds every year, every year. They had grouped that Vanguard amount of seventeen ninety-five, which you actually see on the next line. They had grouped it in there. We made them pull it out so that now it's under gifts and grants because it's restricted. It's yours, not ours. But they count it as part of our our income in the total income. So when they are doing that number of income minus expenses, they're including that extra seventeen hundred ninety-five dollars. We aren't because it's not ours. So theirs is ten thousand, minus the seventeen ninety-five is our eight thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars.
And I've asked if we could just simply take the board Vanguard account completely out of this statement, and they say that's going to throw it off.
Well, you can't because technically you're part of ours.
Yeah.
Um, so we have, we are, we are running through with the, Erica and I, the accountant, have gone through many different versions of how to do this. And there's a possibilities of creating new lines next year in the audit to make that clearer, but we haven't figured out exactly how to do that. But as of right now, for whatever reason, they group that Vanguard interest into our income.
MDA is our document. Why can't we use the five sixty-eight as the definition of an unassigned fund balance? Why can't we use that definition? Then we would be inconsistent with the calculations here. Why can't we use that number instead of the eight fifty-seven? This is our write-up here.
Because that's the auditor's fund balance. It's a different term. It's, they're using all of the numbers.
I don't have any more numbered questions.
What other questions then?
I've lost the page, but somewhere in all this, they noted the Vanguard fund, seventy-nine thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have two Vanguard funds, and they do indeed tow seventy-nine thousand.
Yep.
But I think we have it in two different share classes.
Yes.
Which is not apparently.
Page thirty-one, that what you're looking at?
Um, twenty-four has the you're saying it reads like this is one fund, says Vanguard Group, the G M A fund. Seventy-nine thousand.
Twenty-four. So.
Kind of reads.
It, yeah, so one of the other things is that seventy-nine on page, uh, whatever you just said, is that reflected also on page thirty-one. Um, so the non-spendable endowment is actually, which is fifty-five thousand plus the twenty-four, which gets you the seventy-nine, nine oh four. Fifty-five thousand is simply the minimum amount you have to keep into your account by the board's bylaws. That is fifty-five thousand. So that is the money that is not spendable by the board, and it's your money. The twenty-four thousand nine hundred and four is the amount left between those two Vanguard accounts to get to seventy-nine.
We have bylaws saying we have fifty-five.
Yes.
You give us a copy of that, by email?
Sure, I I I will. Um, I went back and uh found them from twenty thirteen. There's a corpus of fifty-five thousand that you may not go below.
Yeah, because I had asked before for the history on that Vanguard fund, and there's not much there.
It's kind of everywhere.
There, what there are, there are, I'm sorry, I I I interrupted you, and I didn't mean to. There are treasurers reports that that talk about that, which is where I found this, and I'll share those with you. We send them to the auditor.
I've only seen level one on the smaller fund, the intern, called the intern fund.
Right.
And there is a document to be used only for interns, but on the other fund.
Yeah.
Would love to see that.
I I will share that treasurer's report from twenty thirteen, which kind of talks about this.
Well, am I incorrect about there being two different share classes?
I don't think so. It's, again, it's not my account, so all I do is enter those numbers. I don't maintain your Vanguard account.
Or if the numbers are together, yet they report one share class, that's not correct, is it?
I don't know.
It's it's a total, total, total number, uh, you know, it's.
It's not our, it's not ours, so they're just reporting it as restricted for library services. It's restricted for library services because the Vanguard account, there's the intern one, which is restricted to pay the intern, but the other one is actually your money to spend for the library as you see fit, as long as you keep fifty-five thousand dollars in it. So it is money for you to spend. So both of those are listed as restricted as for the library services.
Yeah, I have the October treasurer's report in front of me. There's only one share price listed for the Vanguard accounts. So to me, it appears that there's only one class of shares. We have the original account where we have to have that fifty-five K minimum, and then there's the Rudolph account, the intern account. Um, and but it's the same share price for both of those.
I think we'd have to, John, I think you'd have to literally log in and see the account and see what's going on with the account.
Yeah, how can I look at that?
Uh, that's how I would verify that.
Um.
But that's for the board to do.
The differences in uh minimum balances and operating costs.
Okay, yeah, fair, and these are truster questions.
Minimum balance is fifty-five thousand for that one, but there's no requirement for the other.
To have those accounts with Vanguard.
Oh, yeah.
They have them.
Yeah.
So can I bring us back to the audit? I think a lot of our conversation has focused on management's discussion, the part that we have internally generated.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have the auditors waiting here. Are there other discussion points or questions that we need to discuss about the management side or what the auditors have done as we prepare to speak with the auditors?
They are waiting. However, their time was 11:30. So we do have a little bit of time.
They're playing Wordle. They're okay.
Yeah.
We need to make sure we are ready.
I have one other comment on page 28. And I think this would be for the auditors. Um, we talked about our favorite topic, OPEB. And um, they mentioned it provides dental coverage and it does not. In other words, the employee has to cover 100% of the dental. So there's no money in OPEB for dental. Employees cover 100%. That's in the Bolton Report. So while they have dental coverage, OPEB does not provide anything for dental.
Where is that on page 20?
It's the second paragraph, the third line down.
Oh, I see it.
And I think I highlighted it under Bolton. They can continue dent coverage, but there's no OPEB for dental.
You're technically true, but just so you know, they they do pay one, like they have it all deducted. So their health and is, and is being deducted for that. And we're paying the health bill, which covers health, dental and vision. So we do pay that health bill and then reimbursed by the employees. We are paying a dental bill out of OPEB. We just get reimbursed for it. If I think if you pull.
I would, I would refer it to the auditors and they can look at Bolton and they can look at their language. This part is theirs and um, but our assets don't go to dental coverage. It says under, dental costs are 100% paid by the retiree. Therefore, there's no OPEB liability associated with dental benefits. So I will just um, with that to them. They can.
Are you satisfied with taking out dental as just a fix?
I would think that's the right thing to do.
All right. Well, I, I don't think that's a problem for us to do.
I think, I don't, I don't know if it is a problem or not, but I want to point out that if that becomes an issue in the future and we are paying out of the OPEB for health insurance, does that mean that we will not be able to pay the dental bill and we will have to pay that out for, out of operating? So just keep that in mind.
It's page 17.
Thank you.
Um, towards the bottom dental vision.
Thank you.
So this is, this is more of a.
Excuse me, Pedro, there's another question though, but it says retirees are eligible for medical prescription, dental, vision and life benefits through the plan.
Yep.
So isn't this?
I know. So which one is right?
Yeah, because this is also saying dental is covered. Is this only referring to Care First Dental PPO and Care First Blue Vision?
Because they can choose dental. It's, it's in the bill.
So whereas like a retiree may pay um, some percentage, let's just say 50% of their premiums every month, right? Like we all do. In dental, they're going to pay 100% of the premium. That's going to be the part of calculation. There's vision, they might pay 35% medical, 50% and dental, they're paying 100%. They're getting a benefit. But we don't have any, we're not paying any cost for that. We don't have any liability for that. They do get the dental coverage. That's a benefit. But we just don't have a financial liability with it.
Sounds like they're defining coverage separately from uh, actual costs, like in terms of, like in terms of the dentist being part of PPO. And, and in some cases, um, like the cost that um, worn by the employee would kind of might be different from what the dentist initially charges.
So the statement on page 28 of the audit is not necessarily inaccurate though.
Um, I'm 28.
I, I don't know how much it's worth.
I, I, I will just let them decide that because this, they own this language. Um.
But it's up to us to prove it or not. And I mean, they have decided, so.
They have, they have this?
Yes, yeah, that's, that's what Belinda was saying.
I would think so. I would think so.
Yeah, no, we provided them with the OPEB report. They've seen it. Anything related to the OPEB is coming from them.
It's not that, yeah, it's just, it's not that they don't get coverage. It's assets of the trust are assets are going towards it. And that's, that's the that's the tricky question.
All right. Would you all like to pull in them now?
Are they ready?
Are you ready?
People ready.
Good morning, Renata.
Good morning.
How are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good. Uh, Renata, this is our Board of Library Trustees. We've just been through most of the audit and they may have some questions for you, but I know you have a presentation first.
Yeah, no, we can go through our presentation.
We're going to assign you as a co-presenter.
Okay, let me know if you can see uh, our slides.
And Chris is here as well. Hello, Chris.
Hi, Chris.
Thank you both for being here.
Yep, thanks for having us.
All right, we're good with the slides.
Yep, so uh, good morning, everyone. Again, thanks for having us. This presentation represents our results of our financial statement audit, which includes our also includes our required communications to governance. So I will have Renata walk through the presentation. If you guys have any questions as we go through it, just feel free to jump in or, or stop us as we go through this. Renata?
Yep, thank you. Okay, so um, we're engaged to perform an audit of the financial statements um, as of June 30, 2024. Uh, we also um, assisted management with the preparation of the financial statements. So this is a non-attest service that we've provided. Uh, and then as we go through our audit, if there are any observations, recommendations that we know during the audit, we would uh, bring, bringing those up to, to this group. And then as a reminder, we are available for year-round consultation. So uh, if there are any questions, it doesn't need, you don't have to wait until our audit period to reach out to us and we'll always be available to assist on anything. Um, as far as our, our results, uh, we are planning to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. Um, so this is the best type of opinion that you could, could get. So it's a, it's a clean opinion uh, on the financial statements. We did not discover any instances of fraud or were made aware of any fraud. Uh, we did not perform a fraud audit, but if we did discover anything related to fraud, we would be required to, to communicate to you um, in today's presentation. Um, there is also no material weaknesses that were identified um, during our audit procedures and we did receive full cooperation um, from, from management, from, from Belinda, um, Michael, as well as Erica. Uh, on this slide, what you see here is our audit approach. So it is a risk-based approach. Uh, you've probably seen this before in our previous presentations. Uh, but we do like to, to always have this as a reminder um, that our audit approach is a risk-based approach where we do spend, you know, a lot of time understanding uh, the, the business, the industry risks. We meet with management to do, to perform walkthroughs. Uh, we perform testing of transactions. We go through our, what could go wrong. Uh, and then based on that understanding and based on that assessment, we then go into our next steps in terms of financial close and reporting misstatement analysis, uh, substantive testing of year-end balances and um, gas compliance requirements um, as well. Um, as far as our significant audit areas based on our risk assessment, uh, we have uh, listed here a couple of those areas. So cash, controls and reconciliations, uh, where we spend um, time reviewing those uh, reconciliations as well as vouching the bank balances to bank statements. Um, fixed assets and accounting, which does include the books of the library. Uh, completeness of liabilities. Uh, so we do perform a search for unrecorded liabilities. Uh, revenue recognition and then OPEB accounting as well. Um, here on this slide, what you see here are the five interrelated components of uh, in terms of the control environment uh, defined by the COSO framework, which is the framework that we use to assess control environments um, during our audit. So the five components being the control environment, risk assessment, control activities, information and communication and monitoring activities. Uh, and as you can see at the bottom of the slide, as we performed that assessment of the control environment, we have assessed that the control environment is uh, designed and operating effectively.
What does that mean? What is the control environment?
That's really just kind of tone at the top. Um, or do we believe that there's competent people in place? Is there uh, accounting system in place and uh, things that would then allow for there to be the things that follow here on this slide, like uh, control, specific control activities and, and monitoring and the like. So it's really just i- in a way, it's just what is, what is management set up for success for the financial statements? And then do they have a seriousness and a commitment to get the financial statements correct?
And the, the determination that it's effective, is that just an effective or ineffective binary? Or what is this?
Yeah, yeah, basically. Well, it could be effective, non-effective, or potentially areas for improvement if we noted any deficiencies.
Okay.
In these items and we had no, no deficiencies. So really this is the, the best level that we would give um, because it, uh, as far as our assessment, so there, there isn't a greater level, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And that goes the same for this slide when we say effective, just.
Yeah. So on the, the next two slides, uh, we have some specific key processes that were identified uh, as the main processes of the library. Uh, and this is where we spend time on that testing that I, I mentioned. So when we go through our walkthroughs, when we are testing transactions, uh, when we are performing substantive procedures like vouching balances, uh, those are the key processes that we um, we consider during our audit. So treasury, uh, which would include cash management, those reconciliations uh, as well as investment, accounting, monitoring and valuation. Um, estimation, so looking at methodology, information and calculation of any estimates that are on the financial statements. Um, financial reporting, so and looking at accounting principles, disclosure, how were the books uh, being closed at the end of the year, uh, maintenance of that general ledger. And then on the revenue, uh, looking at revenue recognition, billing, cash receipts as well as cutoff. So as we look into those four key processes, uh, we have assessed that they are designed and operating effectively. And as Chris said, that's the, that's what you want to hear uh, when we are presenting. That's the best um, outcome that you can have there. And then on this next slide, a couple of other processes that we um, evaluated. So expenditures, uh, we tested transactions of purchasing, uh, and looking also at accounts payable and cash disbursements on the payroll, payroll accounting, uh, payroll disbursements and, and processing. And then the fixed assets being the physical custody of those assets. Uh, and then asset accounting as well as a depreciation um, calculation. And then for those areas as well, we have um, assessed that the controls are designed and operating effectively. So with that said, um, what we have on the next two slides are a summary of the financial statements. So on this slide is a summary of the statement of net position. Uh, so we spend, uh, the main item on the current and other assets um, is cash and investments. Um, and we did spend time reviewing those to ensure that they are um, complete and accurate on your financial statements. Uh, and then capital assets, the main item being the books uh, that the library holds. Uh, so we reviewed those as well during our audit. And then on the liability side, the largest liability that's under the other liabilities is the OPEB, the net OPEB liability. Um, and that number comes directly from the actuary. So we do spend time also reviewing that actuary reports, but the number comes straight from that, uh, that report. And the deferred inflows and outflows that are related to OPEB are also determined by, by an actuary. Uh, so with that, I know um, the board has reviewed the, the results with management, but I wanted to check and see if there's any questions, anything that we can answer in terms of the um, statement of net position.
And I'll just add that this is on the entity-wide basis, if you will, that takes the general fund and, and the governmental funds, but also adds in the long-term assets being the capital assets, the long-term liabilities, as Renata mentioned, primary, primarily the OPEB liability and what, the, the fund that we get to have with government accounting is that there, the statements are on two different bases, bases or bases of accounting, the general fund being unmodified accrual. But then also there's a requirement to show quote unquote entity-wide, which includes all long-term assets and, and liabilities.
Anybody have any questions?
And we'll get to the profit and loss or the statement of revenues and expenditures af- after this slide. This is just the balance sheet uh, picture. So we'll have, we'll have more numbers to show you here in a second.
Hooray.
Yep.
Okay, well, there are no uh, questions on this next slide. What you see here is again, just a summary of the statement of activities. Uh, so on the revenue side, uh, the, the largest revenue is the county appropriation um, at 3.8 million. And we did confirm that amount directly with the county um, as far as our audit procedures. Uh, the second line, the county appropriation, uh, donated facilities, that's related to, to the actual uh, building. So that's considered, that's a county property. So it's considered to be an in-kind um, donation from, from the county. And you see the related expense, uh, rent expense uh, is the same amount. So it's just an in and an out, but it does need to be shown on the statements. Um, and then on the expense side, salaries and employee benefits, that is the largest expense. So we did review and audit the salary expenses um, to ensure that that amount is reasonably stated. Uh, and then on the other expenses, I did want to mention that in there because this, the statement, as, as Chris mentioned, is the government-wide. Uh, you see here is the OPEB-related expenses and that's what's causing um, this, this main change in the other expenses that you see um, on this, on this report.
Yep. So if you were to compare this to the general fund, the, the revenues would be the same because the revenue recognition between general fund and entity-wide is the same. However, on the expense side, there's some differences in accounting for capital asset activity as well as the uh, OPEB, OPEB activity. So there's there's roughly a hundred thousand dollar difference between fund level or your fund level expenditures and the statement of activities expenses uh, for those items. So although there was a loss or a negative change in net position of 91,000, overall, the general fund had a small surplus of just under 11,000. And the gifts and grants fund had a just under a thousand dollar, a negative change in, in that position. Any questions there? All right. Oh, was there one? I'm sorry.
Nope, nope, let's continue. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Renata.
Uh, well, the next couple of slides are really are required communications um, that we are, as auditors, required to communicate to governance. Uh, so as part of our audit, we did um, evaluate the statement as far as being in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. Um, we also um, reviewed management's accounting policies as well as judgments about accounting principles. And as we looked through those, uh, we do believe that And as we looked through those, uh we do believe that those estimates adopted by the library. Uh, those policies are acceptable accounting policies. Um, as far as audit adjustments, uh any fraud, illegal acts or material weaknesses, we did not. Uh, we didn't have any audit adjustments uh during this audit process. And as I mentioned earlier, there were no um fraud that were identified as with no material weaknesses that were noted during the audit. Um, we are not aware of any other documentation that would contain the audited financial statements. Uh, so usually if there if you are planning to to have any other report including that information, we usually just ask. To see that before that is released to the public, so we can just compare to the audited report. Uh, we have not had any disagreements with management um during our audits or no serious difficulties. Encountered during uh performing our audit procedures. Uh, we also have no issues that we've discussed with management prior to starting. Uh, our audit that we would have to to be required to bring it up to to governance today. Uh, we will receive written representations from management, so the the financial statements have not yet been. Uh, issued, but we do send a letter from management to sign before we are able to to complete that audit. And uh we also are not aware of any consultations with other accountants. Uh, which what we call um opinion shopping, so I know uh we are not aware of any of that.
There were none. There were none.
Yeah, that that's more along the lines of if if we were gonna mo- if we were gonna give you a negative opinion because you disagreed with. An accounting treatment, and then we knew you went to another accounting firm said. Hey, would you guys give us a clean opinion with this? That that that's kind of what it's relating to, but we clearly didn't have a situation where we were in disagreement.
Yep. Uh, and then uh we are independent of the library, so we did assist management to. Prepare the financial statements, but all the numbers and and that are there were provided by management. Uh, and we are still, we can still keep our independence um during our our audit. Um, and that's that concludes the the presentation that we had. Our contact information is on the presentation too, if there are any other questions that come up. Uh, but again, just wanted to check if there are any questions or anything else that either uh the Chris or I could uh could answer.
Any questions or comments?
Um, I have a comment on. We just had a discussion on this and didn't. Don't really have a. Inclusion, um get my page.
Twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Yeah.
Twenty-eight if it's a question about.
Page twenty-eight of the audit.
The OPEB note?
Yes, um, second paragraph. The or you referenced dental coverage. Or the sentence is assets of the trust are dedicated towards so. So we don't actually use any assets for dental coverage. If in a a retiree ops for dental coverage, they pay one hundred percent of that coverage. So my question to you, is this statement still correct? It's in, you can see in the Bolton report.
Yeah, we'll compare it back to Bolton. It could be that that verbiage has just been in there for a number of. Number of years and not been updated, but we'll take a look at that and update it accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, well, let me thank you both very much for your hard work, and let me thank and give kudos to our team here and this beautiful, clean audit. Uh, who knew effective could sound so good? Great job, everybody.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Renata, for working so closely with me and Erica.
Thank you, Belinda.
Yep.
Thanks. Have a great weekend.
All right, thank you all. Take care.
Take care.
Bye.
And the the kudos are due entirely to Belinda, who has worked tirelessly with this. Thank you, Belinda.
She does audits, she cleans bathrooms, man.
Yeah.
Flat tires.
Remodels.
Yes. The most valuable employee of the year or something here.
Didn't you jump a car also?
Yeah, she did.
Some light automotive work.
She just learned how to drive the mobile library too.
You can't leave your position though.
Star sheet.
Cannot.
No, I've I've already told her that that it's not allowed to leave the library, that this is a lifetime commitment.
Maybe a fun, maybe a fun day once in a while.
I'm I'm an emergency driver, so. Last resort.
My question on the audit, is this the first year with SBC, this company?
SBC and company.
Third year.
Third year.
It is the third year, and um I will say that it's taken three years for me and Renata and Erica to get to a point where. We have been able to have them pull out the places where we want them to because all the numbers have always been correct. It's just the grouping behind them that has always been, every year we've done a little bit of change to the grouping to make it. Match, and this year Eric and I drilled all the way down and got the groupings right, and which is why I can match every number. Um, to it. So and Renata works very closely with us um in this process. So uh they have been very good, and it's taken them three years to learn. What, how the library functions and getting us understanding what those accounts mean too. Cause we do have a lot of accounts. Ours is, not every company has this many accounts. Cause we break out everything in order to be able to maintain and process and check our funds.
And we use SBC because the county does, so we like write on their contract?
Yes, we do.
And you know, how often do they recompete that? Do we?
They they just, they just be upped with SB and C last year.
So they recompeted in SBC one again?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the um but we do get a substantial cost break for we're going with them. The kind of downside is that the and this I'm moving forward here. The downside is that the county's audit is not considered complete until our 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 audit is also considered complete. So um it sounds like you would like an opinion on page twenty-eight before you would vote to approve this. Is that so, or would you vote to approve contingent upon that being fixed?
I mean, I I would feel comfortable moving forward with that contingency.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, perhaps we can entertain a motion to approve the audit. With the with the resolution of this dental issue after they do their research. What do folks think?
Why not send it forward with a cover letter? Indicating that this is an outstanding question.
Um, I can tell you that we'll probably have it back from them within, this is Friday, so early next week. So we could hold it at least another day or two. Um, I don't want to talk for Michael, but before we send it with that corrected amount. So if you voted to move forward with this correction, we would just wait for that correction to arrive.
They have to provide a final version anyway for us to send on to the county. But if you would say pending that correction, the final version you would be good with. I think that that would be something you could do. I have sent a copy of the draft to the county just to let them know because they said, where are you? And I said, here's where we are pending board approval. So they they know that you are moving forward and I I think are good with uh another week or so anyway.
So.
How do we say this?
So uh a motion, we could entertain a motion to approve this draft audit. Ending the correction of this um of the mention of dental coverage on page twenty-eight.
So, so we don't, I I'm not sure that we don't really approve the audit. Yeah, the auditors do. It's their audit. They sign it under their signature. It's their audit, it's their document. Now, we can vote to approve whether or not to accept it and move it forward.
To accept it, yes.
See how they have a signature page now. It's it's really their document.
Okay, so the verb is accept.
To move it, to accept the document when finalized by. SB and SB company.
Right, so they can't, they can't approve it until you accept it. They're waiting for your acceptance to send us that final document.
Okay, so then they'll finalize it and sign it.
So we can entertain a motion to accept the draft audit. Pending clarification and correction of the mention of dental coverage.
Okay.
Anybody want to so move?
I say move.
Thank you, Judith.
I'll second that.
Thank you, John Walters. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I want to be respectful of your time, and we are approaching noon. I can put off the approval of the policies till next time. There's no hurry on them. Our policies are already pretty much in accord with the state standards. These just update them now that I've actually seen those standards, so I can put that off. Um, I could very quickly have you look at one. Document here, and that is the request for budget amendment. Um, if you, we we gave you an updated fiscal year twenty-four where we were taking these amounts off and we're adding these amounts on. So that all of the numbers ended up not in the red. And to do that, your budget amendment, um all those figures are listed here, and if you're comfortable. Um, we can have you approve that um if you want. More time to look at that. We could put this off, but I think it would help Linda if we could just get that done for this time.
And these are all FY twenty-four.
Yeah, yeah, these are just reconciliation of of accounts that were negative.
This doesn't change any of the total numbers. It just makes zeros out.
Zeros, everything, yeah, moves some moves the money around a little bit.
All right, anybody uh willing to make a motion to approve this budget amendment?
So moved.
Thank you, John Johnston. You get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Judith. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstained? Motion passes.
You have the profit-loss statement, but those are the numbers that basically created the audit. So you really had a a chance to see those numbers already. Um, and that did not need approval. That was just informational.
Can I uh jump back in on um fines and service, fines and fees real quick? We got some numbers from Sarah, I believe. Um, we got thirty-two thousand, two hundred dollars in FY twenty-four and um. Uh, let me make sure, thirteen thousand of it was in fines. And about nineteen was in overdue books.
Lost books.
Last overdue is the fines, so sorry, my bad. Oh, nineteen thousand in fines and then lost or replacement, or there's a few other costs in there is about uh thirteen thousand.
So the nineteen thousand is the the money coming in from the fines, and we will clear twenty thousand on the payroll. So I think we can can say we will still have a a line for fines that will be like lost items. But I think the amount will not be something that we're not already covering.
Yeah, just based on this, I would probably budget ten to fifteen in there, probably closer to the ten thousand as an income. And see what that first year looks like.
So when when you do the budget next week, that's uh next month, I'm sorry, that's kind of what that number will be. Thank you. Um.
Uh, so Michael can ask, on the agenda on these audit-related actions, do any of them require action?
The one that required approval you've just done, the others were informational and do not really require approval. Um, so you um now would have time if you wanted to talk about the OPEB. Um, if so, I will very quickly conclude, and you can go into closed session. It's kind of up to you with terms of what your time is.
Uh, yes, why don't we kind of wrap up with the open portion of this meeting, and then we'll move into a closed session for the trustees?
Okay.
All right, well, I have just a couple of quick things then, and that is um. Tomorrow at Leonard Town Library, there's a truth and reconciliation program. Um, it's Tri-County. Uh, Calvert and Saint Mary's both did have a lynching. Charles has none documented, and this is going to be an event about that. It's not officially a library-sponsored event, but um as the museum board secretary, I am working with that. And I have to be at Leonard Town Library at six-thirty in the morning tomorrow for setups. It will last till noon, until two. If you want to come out, I'm sure that we can find room for you. Um, the first budget work session for the county is next Tuesday. And I try to attend those just to kind of see where the county is with its money. We will be ramping up a request to the county um with public support. You'll recall this past year, we actually got more letters of support than the school system did. And we think it's important that the commissioners hear about um how people value the library. The libraries are closed November twenty-eighth and November twenty-ninth.
Sorry, can um the budget session on November nineteenth?
Um, yes.
Time is that?
Uh, I'm sorry, that's um at one-thirty in the afternoon. So they have a morning session, and then they break and they come back in the afternoon. Um, the libraries are closed November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth for the for that holiday. The staff day is December sixth, that's a Friday, and you are welcome to attend staff day. It starts at nine in the morning. And will last until about probably noon or one, and uh the friends do provide a refreshment there. So um welcome to come out, meet staff. We do have some informational sessions, some training sessions, and so sort of give a a year a pleasant close. So that's kind of what I had for you in terms of upcoming events. Um, Amy, you want to tell me about uh the holiday event here?
Um, yes, we are working with the Lexington Park Business Association. Um, they um requested to hold a vendor fair here on December the eighth. Um, with a tree lighting ceremony the evening before. So um it's going to be a really lovely event. Um, they are gonna, they're gonna uh light one of our our trees out here um on the corner of the property. They will have vendors in the meeting rooms here. Um, they're gonna have the Arts Council doing some multicultural activities. Um, they're going to have um Commissioner Ostrow um is going to come come play Santa for them. Um, it's just gonna be, it's just gonna be a good time. So, you know, come one, come all. Um, we have some uh marvelous businesses that are going to be featured here um and in the in the meeting rooms.
And Mrs. Oster will be on hand to play Santa, and somebody you know is going to be an elf, so.
Nice, thank you. Um, one more, any items of new business before we wrap up? Anybody want to? Uh, I want to note that we are going to be electing the twenty-twenty-five slate of officers for the board in December. The officers work on the calendar year term, January through December. I am not going to run for president again. I think it's good for the board and our organization to have some churn and have somebody fresh in this chair. So please consider if you would like to step up for an officer role or uh what the next year might look like. But I think we all have a lot of gifts and talents to share with this group, and it's good to have those opportunities to do so. So look forward to elections next week. So with that, I think we can move uh begin the process of closing the meeting. So we can entertain a motion to close this meeting in accordance with the general provisions article, section three dash three oh five B, section eleven. To consider the investment of public funds and the Saint Mary's County Open Meetings Act nine-five-one to nine-sixteen. So uh would anybody make a motion to close this meeting under those conditions?
Move to close the public session for the purpose of discussing. Excuse me, discussing investment funds in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. You got a second?
Second.
Sure, Simmons. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? All right, motion carries and move into closed session.